Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Greenwood City Council meeting this Monday, May the third, 2021, at approximately 7:07 PM. Mr. Eriksen, would you call the row, please?
Yes, I see Ralph.
Here.
Ralph Meeker.
Here.
Buck Palace absent, Daniel McDaniel.
Here.
Tim Terry is absent, and with Terry's absent, we have a forum with the addition of the mayor.
Thank you. If you will all please stand, we will begin our beginning this evening with prayer led by Brother Trent Stanton from Calgary Temple Folks, our pledge by Chief Sir Vernon.
Thank you for giving me the right church this time.
You're welcome.
My congregation is very happy.
Oh, you're blessed.
It's okay. I don't call it a congregation. Lord, I love you. Thanks again for coming into, letting us come into your presence as we make decisions and lead our country and our nation and our communities, Lord. We thank you for the prosperity that you bless us with, and thank you for a great community like Greenwood that takes time to acknowledge you and to seek your guidance and direction and everything. God, we ask that you would give us comfort and peace to those of us who have lost loved ones, friends, and family. We ask that you would keep us healthy and remove sickness from our presence, God, as we live these times. God, give us peace in our lives, peace in our mind, and that we would be free from anxiety and depression. God, give us the spirit of unity as we try to live for you and create a place that gives a life for your name, Jesus. We ask that you would help us be a life for your kingdom, God. We thank you in advance for the blessings that you continue to put upon Greenwood and this area, God, and we know that you're going to continue as we look to you for guidance and direction. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you would just put your hand over your heart for people to pay your pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see it? At this time, I would ask for approval of the minutes for the April 5th, 2021 Greenwood Council meeting.
Mayor, make the motion. May I approve those minutes?
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Meeker.
Yes.
Mayor Kinslow.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. On our agenda at this time, we have recognitions and acknowledgements. We have a very, very special guest here this evening, a new television star, if you will, to say in Greenwood. And I have a proclamation that I would like to, I'm going to sit here and read it because it's a little leafy, if you will. I asked Ms. Veneman if it was okay if I read it, or she would, I'd love for her to, and she was all pleased. You read it. So I'll read this, and this, these are only Veneman's words. So, "This is a proclamation we hand to the people of Greenwood, the city of Greenwood, by the Mayor Doug Kinslow, to publicly recognize Emily Veneman and Blue. Whereas the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, takes any opportunity to commend its citizens for their outstanding contributions to the quality of life in this community. And whereas, while out on Emily's daily run, a little girl was outside the funeral home and yelled, 'May I pet your puppy?' Emily smiled and replied, 'Of course, as long as your parents don't mind.' The little girl flashed a shy little smile and said, 'Oh, my parents aren't here. My mom's inside, and my daddy died. We are at his funeral.' Before Emily could say a word, Blue, Emily's dog, walked up to this little girl and ever so gently sat down in front of her, and the little girl wrapped her arm around Blue's neck and would not let go. This little girl's friend and family were all surrounding her and Emily, and there was not a dry eye to be found except for the little girl. Once Emily introduced herself, the little girl jumped up and said, 'I want you to meet my daddy. Can you please come meet him?' Emily replied, 'If you want me to meet your daddy, I'd absolutely love to.' Emily met this little girl's daddy, mother, and her grandparents. She showed Emily the beautiful bouquet of flowers that surrounded his caskets and told Emily how pretty she thought everything looked. She then asked Emily if her and Blue would stay for a few more minutes if she wanted to pet Blue a little more, and so Emily did. This little girl's aunt and uncle looked at Emily with tears running down their faces, and their aunt whispered, 'I think God led you and Blue over here today for a reason.' Blue's love and gentleness that she has shown her has touched our hearts. Emily has always referred to Blue as a gentle giant, due to being able to sense when someone is upset and has this overwhelming calmness about her that is indiscernible. Emily stated that she was thankful for God allowing her to meet the little girl on one of the hardest days of her life. This little girl will probably never realize how special today was for Emily as well. Emily felt she was meant to meet this little girl, and that she was the perfect reminder of God's goodness and faithfulness through every storm. And whereas Emily, Veneman, and Blue's story of kindness and compassion has been featured on CBS National News Show on the road with Steve Hartman. Now, therefore, I, Doug Kinslow, Mayor of Greenwood, Arkansas, am hereby deemed an honor and pleasure to proclaim May the third, 2021, as Emily Veneman and Blue Day. Congratulations to them. I can talk until I'm blue in the face. Sorry, that was horrible. If you'll come up, Emily, for just a moment, I want to give you that proclamation. And this is her mom and dad, and I think the parents, as all things, I was at an Eagle Scout Award banquet yesterday, and as much as an Eagle Scout deserves his award, and Emily certainly does this long for Blue, there's no doubt that her parents deserved your applause, too, for raising such a fine. Veneman wants his picture made, I can tell. I had a couple other things. This is a pen, just like the one I wear. So I want to give that to you, and I'll try to pin it because I might harm you. We do have emergency personnel here, but I'll give that to you. And it's just a reminder, and our motto here, and this is for Blue, I'm not sure what you put on its collar, it's her collar. This, our motto is feel like home. And I'm easily going to tear up, I'm sorry. There are a tremendous amount of things that people do agree with to make it feel like home, but nothing more special than what you did for this little girl. This is a key to the city where we get excited. It does not open City Hall. And I do say this a lot, but I truly mean it. This is not a key to open anything here at City Hall. What I really mean is that it's a key to all the hearts of everybody within my voice and all 10,000 people or so, however many of them are here. So thank you from all the bottom of all of our hearts for what you did and what you represent. Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Let me check your Blue's license a little later. I'll get with you and see if he breathes. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for coming.
I didn't hear a word of speech.
Yeah. Okay. Next on our agenda is, gather my thoughts here for a second, sorry. So next on the agenda is committee reports. Splash County Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, the bid opening?
Oh, I am so sorry. Jeremy Shores is here from Hawkins, Oregon. Sorry, we have a bid opening we need to take care of. Sorry, Jeremy. You're getting paid by the arrows. Get you out here.
It may be hard to see, see the writing on this, and it has a touching story. We'll be opening this tonight on some street drainage improvements on Lotte Lane. There's four four-foot pounder culvers that are failing, and a cul-de-sac that is also failing due to bus traffic and turning heavy equipment in those areas. Asphalt shuddering really bad. We're going to expand that radius as well, so that bus could turn around. That happened back up in the driveway, so this is the bid for those improvements. The first bid is from CP construction. Accompanied by bid bond, amount of five percent of bid. Contractor submitted a bid price of $323,815.50. $323,815.50. It's also accompanied by bid bond, amount of five percent of bid. Third bid is from Rajio Construction. It's accompanied by bid bond, amount of five percent They've submitted a bid price of $240,610.00. $240,610.00. The last bid is from Goodland and Goodland. They've submitted a bid bond, amount of five percent of bid. They've also submitted a bid price in amount of $227,650.00. $227,650.00. It's a unified bid project. We will take the bid, all the bids, certify those, make sure everything, contractors add it up and everything, sum it up to the totals that are written off tonight, provide a letter of recommendation to the city as to whether they're awarded. We appreciate your business, and if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Does our budget include the budget for the afternoon?
The budget with professional fees is $229,000. Budget without professional fees is $209,000. That is a carryover.
Any other questions?
I have a motion that we approve the bid, assuming that it's the, you know, the lowest bid, and that it's qualified and acceptable, you know, according to our engineering, Vernon.
Motion?
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Meeker.
Yes.
Mayor Kinslow.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate you very much. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. Splash County Boys and Girls Club, I don't see Kenny, but I know he's giving a brief, brief report. SRCA, same, let me see.
Councilor Vernon, SRCA. Are the mills at $3 a piece, or are they at $2.90? I see you all want to handout it. You got one column that says at $3, and then one bar left that says $2.50, or $2.90.
Okay. I don't have a written or reprinted app. I'm trying to find it. I'm very unkind with this thing. Where are we going? You said it shows $2.50 in the three?
Well, it shows that, it says concrete mills, you know, curbside of the chain of house are $2.90, but then, was there on the?
$123, $3.
Yeah, it says at $3, though. And then it says home deliveries are $2.50. So home delivery is cheaper than in-house. I'm interested in that, too.
Yeah, it says that. I don't have an answer for you, but we'll find out.
I'm texting her out there.
Okay. We may have it here before the meeting's over. She's texting Lisa on that, so we'll get you an answer. Anything else on that one?
That won't affect what we're paying.
Right.
It might impact the future.
Yeah. Okay. We'll see what she replies. Mr. Brown, hopefully. Any other questions on that one? Parks Commission, Steven Goldstein's here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, standing. Mr. Eriksen, if you have a copy of the report, it is May 3rd. As you can see, there's a lot going on in the parks. Freedom Fest is underway as far as all the entertainment has been booked. Working on the shirts as we speak. City lane parking area will be worked on fairly soon. They found a repositioning of water release to keep the parking lot a lot better than it was before. The curbing at Memorial Park has been done. Our guys have been installing bedding stones and putting more on board. The heating aspects are done. The city walking trail will eventually set in brick, in memory of Megan Winston and Janet Solbit. Engineering's begun on the city walking trail, the bridge connecting the city walking trails of Crickin Creek, and side of the Belt Park. Any questions? Thank you.
I want to say, fast on our annuances, I was visiting with Mr. Goldstein before the meeting, and Miss Donna's dad passed away earlier today, so our condolences and prayers for Donna and the family. Thank you, Mr. Sir. Waterways Water Commission, Bailey.
We had a vacancy on the Waterways Water Commission due to the Seawest Falls restoration. In Tateville, we agreed to serve on the Water Commission as a commission member. We've approved the vote commission to improve this level, so later tonight, encourage you to approve it at y'all's level. We have agreed to fund a hundred percent of design costs of getting water and sewer up into the splash pad in Bell Park. We will probably need to later amend our budget to cover that cost. We have funds available for special services. This is what we use for design work. We have projects started that, if the products, other projects started were to be finished this year, design work, we would need up the majority of the credit flow of our labor funds. So just to make sure we don't have any issue if our designs start falling off the designer's desk, which hasn't happened recently, we'll probably need to get that amended. So then, both of two will probably have a budget amendment for that. Product status, the sewer plant valve replacement is about 67% completed. Recent ratings have kind of slowed work, but other than that, it's going fine. Any deal sewer replacement works about 60, 65% complete. Range also slowed work there. Had a few minor complaints, really less than expected. Contractor on that is Goodwood and Goodwood. They've really done a good job communicating with the residents out there to kind of keep, you know, problems down. Bell Road Sewer Extension, that's the one where the principal of the winning bidder died in November. And it's something none of us have gone through before. Going to bond company, you get a bond company to act. We've probably got some movement there. The bonding agent or company, Gray Insurance, has been in contact with Gray Cross. We gave them the names of some of the contractors, one in particular, Goodwood and Goodwood. And the insurance company has contacted that firm, and if their bid is, they were the third low bid on the first time, and if their bid is still good, the insurance company will probably go with them. Of course, we will not incur the additional costs. The insurance company picks that up close to it. Hopefully, hopefully, the work of the belt sewer extension will start maybe late June or July, over hoping for. But again, it's something we've never been through before. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Assistant Forum, I have no signatures on the sign-up sheet tonight, so I do want to recognize another special guest. You're all special guests, by the way, but Senator Matt Bitch is here, and he's not campaigning, but he kind of is, but I'll do it for him. He's throwing his hat in the ring for his state treasure. So we want, thank you for being here tonight, and you're here to represent us, and you do well. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Financial report, Mr. Tom.
You have it been sent to you electronically. I'm going to tell you a little bit about city sales and use tax. One of the things that I do now is I get every week, Stevens Financial Services Group gives me an economic review, kind of gives me an idea as to where the state and where our locality is as far as the economy is concerned, and what's the driving factors behind whether the economy is staying robust or it's in retraction. So I'm going to give you some of the city sales and use tax numbers and kind of parlay that real quickly into the economic review information. So when you look at the April numbers, that were basically February collections that we received in the month of April, our same period now over last year was 8.5%. It's the first time in 12 months that we denied a double-digit growth over the previous year. 8.5% is a little bit down. It's about 2.5% cumulative down. Our cumulative is 16.3%, which is, we were growing in the last four months. Our cumulative was growing, and we now have a decrease of 2.5%. Most of that came because there was a week where there was pretty much no, no one going out buying anything during the snows. At least even Stevens Financial Services Group attributes a lot of the core collections and the core spend during that period of time as a, as an anomaly. So one of the things that they indicate here is the National Federation of Independent Businesses, which mostly are small business owners that pertain specifically to Greenwood. They're basically indicating that they expect strong sales and more opportunities to expand in March, which would be our collections that we receive in May. So the optimism is that we should start seeing our numbers come back to a more normal double-digit level. The index that they were quoting rose 2.5%. So they, they're indicating that they're optimistic based on the numbers that came in March. Labor Department says the Consumer Price Index climbed 0.6% in March, gaining 0.4% over the prior month. And that's due primarily to energy costs. Well, one of the things that they talk about is the core CPI, and the core CPI excludes food and it excludes energy, because you know, gas prices and everything went into a, into a major upswing, which is what's contributing to the fact that there is inflationary numbers coming through. Prices are increasing regarding those two segments, food and energy. But the Consumer Price Index also grew when you exclude those. So the core CPI went 3% in March, climbing 0.1% over the prior month. What's really holding that number in check right now, though, is the fact that inventories remain high at all levels. I have the numbers here for Arkansas, for instance, for, there's, there's a thing called the turnover ratio, inventory turnover ratios. For manufacturers, that should be somewhere between 5 and 10 turnover ratio per month. What you're looking at is a ratio right now, in February, that's the latest numbers they have, is 1.4, which means they're holding on to an awful lot of inventory at the manufacturing side. Retail, wholesalers, rather, which is where they would shift off that inventory to, should have a turnover ratio between 6 and 12. They're at 1.27. Again, they're holding on to a lot of inventory. Retailers are supposed to be between 2 and 4 times turnover in their inventory. They're sitting at 1.23. So because there's a lot of inventory there, there's not a lot of pressure towards raising prices, because the demand's not there to turn that inventory. So the inventory is one of the factors that is retaining a kind of a more stable CPI right now, Consumer Price Index. One of the things that grows city sales and use tax, as you know, there are three things, basically. Growth in commercial retail business, growth in consumer purchases within the city's existing businesses, and growth in consumer price or impact of inflation on those prices, which is why I wanted to bring in the, what I look at, the numbers I look at are the actual turnovers of the inventories, where they're headed. That drives inflation. Inflation drives whether there's going to be a pullback on spend in nonnecessary items that people are out there spending money on right now. So if you look at discretionary spending, there was a lot of it, and a lot of it happened as a result of the stimulus checks that you were getting, and apparently, there might be even another one happening. So those are temporary, short-term. I'm looking more in the long term. So I am still cautiously optimistic in this regard. Just wanted you to know that. Let's see, as far as home builders are concerned, the settlement among builders improved in April. Strong demand offset concerns about the rising material costs and supply chain issues. However, as you know now, the material costs are going up so dramatically that the prices of the homes are also going up. That might slow down some of the robust interest in the market. Depends on how many people are moving in from higher markets, because they come in here and they still see a bargain regardless. So these are things that I talked with, with the Stevens Group and with the people that are providing me this on a weekly basis. If you look at the county sales tax, 1.3% is our growth for same period April over April. That is down from 15.6%. So that was a huge decline in the county sales tax side. So that cumulatively indicated that we dropped from 10.8% to 8.6, or a 2.2% decline. So we were at a decline of 2.5 in the city, decline of 2.2 in county. That still is 3% above what we budgeted. 8.6% is, we budgeted 5.4%. So you're still looking at an amount that's greater than what we budgeted for both of those sides. As far as the next and last one that I want to show you in graph form, it's the A and P, the advertising and promotion. I've gone a little bit farther on these numbers. Right now, for the month of April, we're 8.3% April over previous year, same period April. For cumulative for this year, we're up 13.69%. We budgeted 8%. So we're 5.69% above our budget in A and P. But I gave you two more columns up there on the top to the far right. One is the total prepared food sales and the average monthly sales. So those entities that are providing A and P tax from their prepared food sales, it's easy to take the numbers of that was reported and parlay that into what their actual prepared food sales were. And from 2018 to 2021, you're going to, you'll see that we started at almost 13 million in 18, 14.7 in 19, 16.5 million on here in your entities here that are prepared food. The average monthly sales, that's the monthly sales now, I can actually relate to 2021, is continual growth. So between the 1 million that we were collecting on an average for 2018, as far as what the entities are doing is their revenues for prepared food, that has grown 31% in four years, to where we are. in the, to where we are right now. So from a million seventy nine thousand to a million four hundred and fifteen currently. So again, let's go back to the three things. Growth in the number of prepared food locations is one factor that would make that number grow. The other is inflation impact from 2018 to 2021 or raising prices of the prepared food. And the increased sales, there could be a lot of people that decided that they would rather spend their money here rather than somewhere else out and about. So there, those three factors or a combination of all of them is what went into that thirty one point, uh, twelve percent. There's a little bit of all of that in, in what's the dynamic behind the growth. Um, and as you can see, the, uh, year of 2020, the pandemic really did not, it's not even a flip in, in our growth on the A and P side. If you were to go to the, on your report for the consolidated financial, page 24, which is the last page of the consolidated financial and audit report, I just wanted to point out that your city income revenues are four million seven hundred and sixty one thousand on a budget of eighteen million. We collected twenty five point seven nine percent through April of our revenues. So our, our city expenses are four million three out of twenty one million, which is twenty point five seven percent, which is what yields a surplus right now in four months of almost a half million dollars, one hundred and thirty five thousand, to be exact. Our budget is to end the year at a deficit of two point five million. That's because most like, most of it is the capital spending carryover of two point three million. That's capital projects that were put on hold or not spent last year that are in our funds right now that we're going to release to spend on the capital side. If you take the capital spending out, you're at two hundred and twenty eight thousand operationally deficit wise. So right now, we're at half a million up on a budget of two hundred and twenty eight thousand down is about three quarters of a million dollars favorable right now. Um, and then I want to point out one other thing that's not in your report, and that is the total capital spend in four months. Right now, in 2021 citywide, is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars so far in four months. That's always been our capital and capital improvements, capital expenditures improvements. Our budget for this year is four million three hundred and eighty six thousand. We have spent in through April nine point three two percent of what we have budgeted for capital. So, uh, as you heard, Water Sewer is getting ready to unload an awful lot. Where'd they go?
No, they're, they're.
Pointing at them. Okay. Um, they're getting ready to spend a lot of, of money on some capital improvement. So you're going to see that number dramatically increase over the next few months. Uh, but that's a number that I am watching and you should be watching too, because as they don't spend it, that's money that you should expect to be in next year's budget unless they abandon certain projects. Um, the increase of our cash funds over the last four years is thirty three percent. But in the first four months of 2021, on page 25, the last thing that I wanted to point out was that we have a two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollar increase in our cash coffers for the first four months, which is two point one four percent, uh, increase in our cash since January one. So that's, again, increasing our, the 2018 cash funds. We should be somewhere around 10 million. We're right now at thirteen million six hundred and forty five thousand. So most of that money is going towards that deficit that I gasp for, we told you we were looking at spending two point five million dollars deficit. It's coming from that surplus that we're generating. So the funds are there. It's not like we have to go looking for them. It's, it's there and it's committed. And with that, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, sir. As always, in regard to spending, I want to mention too, I had a visit with Senator Pitch today, I guess, on the phone, I believe. And Senator Pitch made a few phone calls for me. And one was to, uh, I think he's having lunch with Mr. Director Tudor tomorrow with RDOT or Friday. And I suggested through the grapevine, if you will, that we, we spend some of our bond money, uh, on our traffic relief project, specifically on engineering cost. And I think this Senator Pitch has put that, the director's here, and we should, hopefully we hear something back tomorrow or the next day if we learn about that. So we want to kind of get that ball rolling a little bit. Uh, I know we have until 2004, I believe, 24, excuse me, to, to spend it. But anyway, I think it's going to be significant when we can, we can do that. And I'm going to go backward, digress here just a little bit. Uh, Mr. Brown asked about some numbers with the SRCA, and I think Daniel was able to speak to Lisa. So if you have any clarification on those meal amounts?
Yeah, Lisa said that for residents that are over the age of 60, it's three dollars a meal. And for those under the age of 60, it's six dollars a meal. She said that, I asked her if that's regardless that they eat there at the center or they have it delivered. She said that they do not deliver to residents under 60 unless they are elder choice. That's some kind of program that residents have.
That'd really clarify the two fifty thing, though.
We'll ask her, we'll ask that later. Yes. More information. Thank you. So it pays to be gold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Tom, for the report. Uh, we are at the agenda additions, a portion of the meeting, and, uh, we started with one and we have tripled, so we need to add two more. Still, hopefully we'll get out before storms hit. Uh, we need to add, I've got it listed as number two, if that's okay with, uh, I just got police policy down.
Resolution to the wind's sworn personnel handling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a blank name and then she goes to the real name.
Hi.
That's number two. And then number three, we have that listed.
Approval of contract for Bell Park Promenade, page two, that is page two.
Page two, yes. And I think Mr. Hamby's going to address that. Right. We got a, we got a notification from McClellan. Is that something?
Yes, did you talk to him?
I did not.
Sean.
I never did. Is it here? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
It's also on tablet.
Counsel has, yeah, it is on tablet. So thank you. Okay. So those are the two we need to add with counsel's blessing approval on that. So we'll move on to old business. There is none. Uh, so we'll go right to number one on the, on the water, on the new business, sorry, it's Water Waste Water Commission. Uh, Mr. John's left. Where are you thinking of, sir?
There was an emergency call.
I'm, I'm.
Speaker.
Great for us that are still here, will you? Thank you. Uh, so, uh, that is the form of replacement member to Water Waste Water Commission, I guess, John Left, the building.
Yeah.
So he mentioned that earlier, uh, and Tate Cole is who the commission has a representative rep.
Reckon.
Thank you. And that's really not that hard.
Make a motion. Should we approve?
No. Second. I have a motion to second to approve the form of Mr. Tate Cole to the Water Waste Water Commission.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Number two is the, uh, police chief. You want to address this?
You should have both policies there. I'm looking to, one add would be the, it'd be a hearing. It'd be one that we are adding. And that basically gives you instruction if you see something that is excessive force, then you will take action to stop that excessive force. Uh, also, the House Bill 1865, we're going to try to require us to have yearly training for duty to hear me. I'm not sure what that's at right now. I was just trying to look real quick. But that's basically the new policy that we'll be adding. And then the second one is to replace the old use of force with, uh, I think, kind of, where did, uh, something to resistance?
Do you want to copy?
Response to resistance.
Uh, there's some things in there that, that's added, obviously chokeholds, neckholds, uh, a duty to, uh, provide and develop assistance. But obviously, you've watched the news and there's some areas you want to stay away from unless the labor forces offer us. But this will bring us up to date on where we should be with our practices. We'll take people in custody of their resisting risk. And they basically follow the guidelines of the Arkansas Association Chief Police Policies that they put out. So they are, uh, professionally graded and, uh, they can stand the test of litigation and, uh, we need to get those added as soon as possible.
Admin resolution has exhibit A and zip B. You got that, that I, I emailed to you.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. Have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Same.
In a second. All right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, chief. Uh, moving on to number three is the, uh, McClellan issue. Michael probably referred to it. And you have in your, uh, confidential settlement. This is something that came back to us, uh, in regard to page two Promenade. We weren't quite happy. I know Mr. Hamby was not satisfied with it. So we turned it back to them and they, since then, returned with this document.
I forget the details of what happened, but I'll be right here. Tell me all of them, though. Give me the.
Um, go ahead. You want to address it?
Short, the short, the skinny version. Um, our engineer dropped the ball on being an RDOT grant.
Like this one of the details?
Several of the details.
Yep.
Of it being an RDOT grant. And so when it got down to the end, had I not asked him to check with RDOT before planting the trees at another time other than when the project was actually ended. They were going to wait and plant the trees in October due to pressures better than the dead of summer. He acted like he didn't know what it was talking about. And I tried to turn in my resignation because I thought it was my fault, but found an email where he knew in the beginning he was an RDOT grant and he was supposed to have bothered each step to make that grant come true. And it didn't happen.
How much has been granted for?
A hundred and twenty six thousand.
Twenty six, even, I believe. Or DOD could not.
They couldn't, they couldn't sign off on it.
Right.
Even after we got to the end and realized, he realized what happened and, um, we tried to, he tried to, and, and did, you know, meet all of the, all of the requirements at the end. And I think that RDOT, Arkansas Department of Transportation was good with, they didn't see any harm, any foul. It was just an oversight. He misstepped. He's worked with us than them before. But due to the fact that it goes to the federal government, the federal government wasn't having it. So therefore, the project was done.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
First thing, one thing I would point out, and this will mean, I've had several conversations on the telephone, but as far as getting a hard written copy of this, I did not get it until the last minute. And, um, it certainly grabbed me over the file. And everything looks as if, what he told me, except for the, the last half and second paragraph where it says, "This brother distributed agree that it shall be the duties of the police orders, which is the city of Greenwood, satisfying in all needs, including the hospital, living to be assured of response, personal protection, terms of defenses, and so forth." And that was one of the things that we specifically said we did not want to do. And he told me he'd taken that out, but it isn't. Um, so I want to contact him and give him the voting and tell him that, that I think that was the notice that put in there. Everything else is fine. Um, but that was supposed to have been removed. Because we don't know if there was workers comp coverage or somebody was injured out there. And, uh, probably not an issue, but sure as I take you that, that he's going to come back. A ton of bad's going to happen. Come back to my lab. So I don't have any problems with any of it, except for that portion of it.
Should we wait then?
I would not sign it until I do that approved. And I would ask that, uh, the mayor be authorized to sign off on that if we can resolve that whole issue. So we don't want to come back here, will you?
And, and Mr., uh, engineer name, I'm sorry.
Angie Deville.
Mr. Deville reached out to me this week. I did not return his call because I knew we were having this meeting and I thought, I'm, I'm, there's no need to be talking to him really until we approve or disapprove this. So I'll, I'll reach back. But if you're going to call, I know former, former mayor, Zola, is kind of the contact. So you'll do that tomorrow, I guess.
I will call him first day in the morning. I talk to him, talk to, I generally talk to his air tradition.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I will try to get a load in line with the person.
Okay. So it sounds like, uh, Mr. Hamby's, if, you said it, if you want us to vote, go ahead, vote to allow that agreement to be signed with your, with your approval, counsel?
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion, a second.
And just love the record show that Rob Powell and now has entered the meeting. So the mayor does no longer mix the form. So, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamby. Um, I believe, unless I missed something, which I do a lot, uh, we're really going to support reports and questions from counsel. I do want to make an announcement tonight and be honest with you, I can't remember, I know need to bring to your attention, I have appointed, uh, Chad Grous as our new street director. We, we ran an ad, uh, I don't know, a lot, wrote a paper, and then also in the U.S. League magazine. Got three responses, I think. One interviewed us state, very interested in him, couldn't get him hired, if you will. About staying him away from Mr. Grous. Chad, Chad has been with the street department for a while and has served as interim director twice now. And he, to be honest with you, early was not so interested in putting his name back in the hat, but after, after some, many discussions with him, conversation with him about the future of the street department is what I kind of wanted over there. He, he has accepted it with, with your approval. So that's, I've offered that position to him. Questions and or thoughts? Here's the thing, yeah, it's a, uh, the, the one that you said that was promising. I mean, it was just a, what was the, uh? Money? Money. We had a, I adjourned to an executive session last, completed last month and, and went into executive section with those, uh, council that were here and talked about that and, uh, couldn't, and I went back and offered him what, what I was instructed to offer and he, he turned it down. He is, he was, or is, at the present time, a, uh, director of Public Works in Kansas and making a lot more money than I make or most people on the street. Well, the mayor ran through a lot of money and he, although he's looking to retire, it just, it just didn't, I think there were other things. He was going to have to move and that sort of thing. So I was anxious to get him, but it just didn't work out.
Chad's certainly, it's some, our capable in the past and everything. I recommend approving Chad's appointment as the director.
We just vote. I don't think it's going to vote, but thank you. But I appreciate, thank you. I mean, I, I mean, if we need to vote, absolutely. But thank you for that. So you have any questions about that later?
I guess it's just, only unresolved part of that, you know, big budgetary, right?
Yeah, the, uh, what I have offered him is the low beginning salary of that particular job. So, uh, we'll technically be saving money, I suppose, because Dennis left, retired with, not top app, but for you, pretty far out there. So I'll be dropping down to the, to the entry level of street director for him, which is, which is a pay increase for him. him, because he was born.
You got a lot of your changes in the department that'll parlay some of the salaries too, so you're going to come in most likely by here.
All right, just, are we sure though that we don't have to vote for department heads?
We can't right now, because you're in forum, it's not an agenda.
Might just the council, uh...
Was it a vote, or was it just approval? It basically says approval, I don't remember, they all been there.
Oh, okay.
We usually, used to confirm everybody as department head.
Department heads, yeah, I think, I think it uses the term.
We could override the termination of the department head, uh, that we're required to.
I don't remember them.
We hadn't always confirmed.
It's not careful.
But normally the mayor has power to report to the department heads, and he, I think his courtesy can tell you that it requires a little, I think in the past, two, three major jobs, but this is required, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, so, he's not here tonight, he's got a great start, actually, he has taken off, uh, he, he had quite a bit of comp time, and that was one of the, took a while to make a decision, because as you know, he will no longer receive comp time, so he's learning his comp time before he becomes a director, and I said, well, you're going to be, anyway, he knows what it entails, so that's why he's not here to see you, thank you for the confirmation, um, so, we have those department heads here, if you have questions for those that are attending, or if they're not here, I can give them to them tomorrow.
Uh, I just, I'm saying that I sure appreciate the, uh, the street department and I believe the parks department, uh, working for the, the, you know, citywide, countywide cleanup, you know, that was, uh, sure appreciated, a little bit of that.
Yeah, that was very successful, I don't, I don't know that anybody's here to give me the number, but I, from what I understood, there were a lot of people, I don't want anybody to know, but, thank you, anybody, it was, I was in line, so, they, they were having to shut it down, they were trying, oh, I know what it was, they had an issue of, of not getting the dumpsters emptied clean up, so it was, it was hugely successful, so, I'll pass that on to the street guys, I'm getting, you're right, I know Duane was part of that for sure, and parts of it.
How many times did they get that?
I, do you know?
I'm sorry.
How many times we done, those dumpsters?
No, I, they never gave me the information over there, I'm sorry.
And we, we...
A lot of stuff, we did try something a little different, I don't know how successful it was, either we placed one of those by request to Councilman Powell over in a neighborhood to try to help clean up that particular area, or have it available to them, so much, I don't know how successful that was, if we were only allowed to be able, we were only able to leave that one day, we couldn't leave it overnight, because as you know, we had to regulate the things that go in there, even on a cleanup, so we couldn't leave it unattended overnight, so I don't know how that went, but hopefully it helped to some degree, did you get any feedback from anybody?
He said he put some stuff in there, but it wasn't too much.
Okay, we might look at that later, I, we had, you know, that was a favor that I asked of, of cards, and they did that for us, and it's just the logistics, so I was trying to make sure that, again, can't leave it unattended, so it's just a little bit...
Can I ask about, let me ask about that, I was talking to people a few weeks ago about that sort of thing, Rod comes over and dumps stuff in my dumpster all the time, which is, that's a service.
I think that's a whole thing.
You know, every dumpster I've ever had, you know, I was talking to some business owner, he said, you can constantly put the stuff in the dumpster, and the city should provide dumpsters somewhere, and maybe people will put stuff in the dumpster, it wouldn't use it on business people's dumpsters.
Well, they use the parks dumpster.
Yeah.
We had a new...
And I thought, well, that's not a bad suggestion, but then, I was over in Van Buren the other day, and you go fifty-nine just north of the interstate by that little, I guess it's a park or something right there on the left.
Right on the left.
By that lake, whatever, there's two giant dumpsters, and it's a mess, and so I thought, I don't like that idea anymore, so...
Yeah, it's, it's hard to...
I don't know how you do that, but dumpsters get abused a lot.
Absolutely.
Well, they do get, our residents do get to schedule two RDOT pickups a year with cards, they just have to call and schedule it, so if they have a couple of bigger items, they can call and get that pickup for free.
So with that being said, when a, when a dumpster overflows like that and creates a mess, the responsibility is, if it's on private property, I, I'm looking at the property owner, because I've received several complaints, uh, there on the walking trails by the, car wash.
Oh, yeah, that's...
The dump is overflowing, and they dump the trash, but then there's trash all over by the walking trail.
Yeah, that's a whole nother, Sonny is here, and he's, he's addressed that more than once with that, with the business, with that owner of that business, give Mr. Brown a chance here for a second, Mr. Brown ran out of his stick of sand, and, and it has not been since, and I think the last time, Mr. Bell kind of threatened, well, maybe not kind of, he did, uh, with that situation over there, and it's, it's right in the heart of town, and it's, it's a... So it's the, it's the business owner that is responsible for that, and...
I tried to turn the water off.
You did, which is, be pretty bad for a car wash, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I'll just ask that we follow up with that and stay on that, because I guess, that's, that's very visible, absolutely.
It's owned by Dennis in Fort Smith, and they, they have promised me that they've got a guy that operates a car wash in Fort Smith, and, and he is supposed to be in charge of this one, but I watch it every day, and, and I've got a direct number that I call now, and again, I've, I've threatened with, and run off their water, and that happens every day, and I also, because we have to go down there and think about, so, those two things together seem to make a little...
I noticed, sorry, I noticed lately it's been better, not very good, better.
Well, and too, they have same problem that, that Danny was talking about, a lot of, if you go down there, you'll see tires and batteries and things like that thrown in there too, people use that, because they're not, they're not car wash people, and so that, that is an issue, but still, that's the cost of doing business, and, and they need to stay on top of it.
Well, we're just, uh, I'm following what Daniel said, I mean, I don't remember the, on the recycling area, did we keep a dumpster there so that only Saturdays that people do ones, do, uh, dump things, you know, that they didn't, were watching, you know, stuff?
No, that, to my knowledge, no.
And it's just a recycle.
And I know that the recycling center in itself is, is an ideal to police that, I mean, it's just, people tend, for some reason, they see a dumpster, and they just want to go wherever, so, yeah, there's not one there, we don't have one that is deemed public use, there is the one at the park, which is public, but that's really it.
It's really not public.
Right, right, but, again, it's just, it's just...
Well, is it a terrible idea for us to have a public dumpster somewhere?
Yes.
If you want it to look like what, when you...
I mean, well, hey, see, if we had it inside the recycling center, at least we could control it a little bit, hiding, you know?
I don't know, I mean, that's something to consider.
Cards, you know, I think cards really...
Although, we just want to...
What's hard is the real charge?
Yeah, we just want whatever we want.
Well, in our contract, you know, there were several dumpsters around the city.
I mean, if you want me to, I'll, I'll ask what the price is, and we can look at it, I, I, I tell you, I'm...
I mean, I think people are going to look for the quickest, easiest place to go, Rod just goes right up to my apartment, I got it in there.
Well, I'll, let me, let me talk to cars, and let me, more importantly, talk to the folks that run the recycling center, and there are employees, but I think there's something to be heard from them, to see what, how that would work with them.
I mean, we don't want our dumpsters to look like the one in front of our apartment down there.
Right.
Well, what's to, what's to keep somebody from stopping their, their trash pickup, and then just saving it and going down there and just, maybe just abusing it? Well, they can't stop the trash pickup, can they?
No.
If they're up on the sewer.
Yeah, sewer.
Yeah, that's true, of course, stopping it, that's a true thing.
I didn't mean them using, it's obvious, you can go through some of our neighborhoods, and they're too lazy.
Is this all because of Rod?
Yes.
Well, I mean, again, we can just, we can just kind of like say, uh, on the citywide, countywide, and kind of, kind of verify the sure of Sebastian County, you know, to use it, I mean, we could do that, as far as saying, you gotta be a citizen, you know, free to do that, did you say?
We got nothing out here behind the Rose building, somebody's constantly...
I would, I would entertain, again, I'll, I'll visit with our folks over there, I would, I would, my opinion, a little bit, to maybe help with some of this, if it would, is maybe consider a second cleanup, to where people don't have as much, I don't know.
We may might buy it.
Or a third, well, yes, second for the city, and, yeah, county does their own, so, yeah, or, I'm sorry, you're right, we have two, third, sorry.
My gut instinct about it, which could be wrong, is that it's not people planning to have trash, you know what I mean, they're not thinking like, come pick up my refrigerator, and I've already used one, now I'm going to do two, you know, nobody thinks about that, it's just, I've got me a bunch of stuff I'm going to get rid of, and I'm going to go find me a dumpster.
I don't think you ever stop, stop it.
Yeah, that's hard to control, I'd rather they put it in a dumpster than in a ditch, sort of, you know, I don't know.
I think there's something looking into it.
I'll, we'll do both, we'll check the car and see what it costs, man, if you're shaking it, we'll do, we'll do that, but I'll, I'll...
We talked about this before, a couple of times.
Talk about it with employees over there, kind of see what, they may have a really quick answer for me, not just they don't want to, that's not a good answer, see what it entails, if that works, any, any other questions for any other department heads that are here, or...
Well, again, I know it's just, uh, with the police chief, you know, Austin here, you know, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, that I did appreciate everything that the, uh, police department does, it's a tough job, and, and making, you know, instantaneous decisions, and being, you know, judged in the aftermath of those, is a, is a, you know, is a very difficult, difficult task, you know, to, uh, ask our law enforcement, and, uh, I appreciate the job that y'all do, and stand behind, you know, everything that y'all do, thank you.
I, I need to add also, my report, Officer Josh Fisher has put these two because, and I was after I sent the report, but he is taking a job out of law enforcement, which obviously a lot of people in law enforcement are doing right now, and he's getting a thirteen thousand dollar raise, so can't blame him there, but I needed to add that, so we, hopefully not taking as long as last time to find somebody, it took us a year, but, uh, there's not many people who want to be in law enforcement.
How long's Fisher been here?
Almost five years, I believe.
How many vacancies you had now?
Well, we have two people that are, one is just got out of the academy, and one is waiting to go to the academy, and then we'll have this one, Josh, who says vacate.
Thanks, Chief, I'm going to read what Counting Brown said, we appreciate you every day, um, and on a note, I'm taking, I took a little bit of, hopefully headache, and Chief, I've gone, I gave him some headache, now took it away, okay, a lot of headache, from Chief recently, I pulled animal control code enforcement back over here to City Hall, uh, again, to help release a little bit under his, under that, the police department, they are, we are, we had hired someone, they're not, it began on seventeenth, I believe.
I haven't got confirmation of that yet, but that's the last thing I've heard.
They'll answer directly to Sonny and the planning department, due to code, the code part of that, I thought it was a good tie back in, kind of, I don't mind it the way it forward, but I think I learned something, uh, the truck has been taken over to Mr. McKenney, if you look at that truck coming down the road, he just immediately, of course, because it has dog cages on the back, animal control, but it took it back over there and had him put code enforcement on the back, or on the bed of the truck, on, as big as we could get it, uh, my plan is that, you know, working with Mr. Hamby, Judge, Sonny, getting COVID, kind of cracking down a little bit on this code enforcement, I think it's going to be helpful when someone comes up in uniform to issue those tickets and a warning to whoever the case may be, so, again, he should be getting set a team to do what you said, so, in the meantime, we do not have an animal control officer, so Hunter has volunteered to take hold of animals at his house, just kidding, but then, is there, are, we do, we have been given a few calls, but so far no vicious animals, so hopefully, I don't know whether it'll be a case until we get this officer, you know, on staff, any, you had a question, I think, for fire?
Yeah, I just, I want to ask, Sir Basie, where did we end with you, Basie, on fire? Was there, is there something else we need to do, I mean, you got this order?
We just draw it, really good.
Well, where does that leave AC though?
Right now, he's captain, where he's been for the past twelve years.
So he just...
Fourteen years.
Because we appointed Bob Dodd as a captain.
Right now, we have four captains, so we're going to figure out how to address that.
Is that something that's your bylaws you talked about, I don't understand bylaws, does it dictate how many of whatever?
Right now, I mean, we're, we're just going with four captains because we weren't able to fill them up to sixteen.
But that's not something in your bylaws, right, number captains, loop tents, or whatever they allow, when you come out there.
I don't think so, I was, I don't think so, I'd go ahead and date it out, but right now, we're, we're able to operate, so, you know, we figure out what we want to do, we're going back, we're, we're making some changes on, on our officers and stuff like that, so...
But as far as the ordinance that says the council has to approve all the firemen, obviously, firemen, we're okay?
Yeah, right now, we're okay, because we don't, we went through the, the stuff to approve right now, so, we withdrew that last week, or last month.
Okay, well, I thought the thing for Bob Dodd, said that it was replaced, so I didn't want to leave AC in a lardish of...
Oh, he's in large, I think.
...of void, you know?
Right now, we're just kind of in that spot, until we figure out what I did.
Anything else for him or Mr. Purvis, yes, sir, I recognize you all go.
I just, I just, I wonder if you'll be able to introduce somebody?
Yes.
A new neighbor, a new resident, and a new colleague, Tim Jacobson, uh, is now resident of Greenwood, he is the new director of Fort Smith Division Business Bureau, works within that type of promotion commission, he came here from Lake of the Ozarks, uh, and he chose Lake Greenwood as home, even though he's working in Greenwood, I just wanted, I invited him to come to the meeting, I wanted you all to lay eyes on him, see, I think he's going to be a great asset, and I invited him to come to the meeting, I thought we'd be here at midnight, so he's, he has another meeting, I see, but we're impressed with him so far, we've had a couple meetings with him, looking forward to working with him.
Fantastic, welcome, Greenwood, sir.
Thank you very much, sorry for being late, I did have another fire engagement, so...
Appreciate you, God.
It's a, it's a great community, and I really, I relocated here back in January, and, um, probably wouldn't be very pleasant, even with this apartment, so, but, uh, it's a great community, and I'd like, I'm going to be part of the community and do what I can, so, pleasure to be here, and I look forward to meeting all you, get to know you a little bit better.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
First challenge, good hotel, thank you very much, and thank you, appreciate you, welcome, Greenwood, anything else, Jim, for anybody?
So, just bring up annexation, you know, we're, we're doing annexation.
Where are we, I'm sorry, yeah, Bob, you want to address, we, we have, go ahead.
That's one of the things that your economic development committee says is one of our priorities, and we decided to set up a subcommittee, and we have set up a subcommittee that our goal is to, prior to the end of this year, is to bring back to you all a set of recommendations with place, option A, option B, option C, the politics, the cost, the, the benefits, and all those things, so we've set up a committee to start to work on that, we've got an outline, and we'll probably visit with some of you all individually, if we go through to kind of hear what you're thinking, although we've, obviously, we've had a lot of conversation... although we've, obviously, we've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years, so. Our goal is working with city staff, and, and Sunny's done a lot of work already, it's not like we're starting from scratch, we're basically gonna take what Sunny said and put it on a little bit. But that's our goal, is to, to bring you all an action item, uh, prior to the end of this year.
Well, we're expanding up, so a lot of the census information is trickling in. Where, where are we at with?
Uh, they say we'll have more information in May. Uh, I'm subscribed to get alerts when new information is, is coming down. As of right now, all we have is that last 2019, as Senator Pitts said, he heard it may be several months before they get down to the city levels, but, but the day we did, I'll make sure the mayor gets it and get it out there, but. I did, I did point out to the mayor the other day, something that I think will bring it back to mind, how important was Greenwood did a good job, is you see that New York lost a congressman? Like 89 people?
Eighty-nine, alright.
Would you wish, think somebody in New York City's wish, boy, wish I'd have gone out and seen one more senior citizen, considering it's something that got that down? It was important.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from anybody?
One more thing for Chad, you know, sir, that over here in this parking lot, uh, the, uh, this, we might have a rain ball, and also, Fire Department, maybe we're doing, you know, a tiny exercise, the water collects right there.
Between the two buildings?
Uh, not between the two buildings, but, uh, against the fence, and, uh, you know, and in that parking lot, you know, it just doesn't drain well, you know, I was wondering if we could extend right there in that, I call it northeast corner, um, around the, that'd be going right or wrong?
Out front, or?
No, out here in the back.
How about that turnaround area for, for that parrot, is it, it's actually?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, just to kind of make it go in that northeast corner, you gotta kind of make it go along down along the, uh, baseline or whatever, to let the kind of drain.
Probably necessary, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, probably necessary along that.
So some material there to help?
Well, in the gazer, kind of knock out the, the little other corner of that, uh, curve there, you know, so that, and let it drain on down there and go down where it needs to.
Yeah, we'll get with, uh, Chad, well, not tomorrow, next week, for sure. I've challenged Mr. Grau with several things, and one is straightening all the street signs in Greenwood. I've never witnessed anything quite many crooked street signs as we have, so he does one of his challenges, to say the least. We do have our new, yes, sir?
We probably need to add about 10 feet to that pavement for our turnaround, so maybe, maybe a little bit of that, and see if we can also put some drainage.
Going straight back?
Going back down to that, uh, ditch, that's right back behind us.
Okay.
Pull up that.
Okay. Yeah, well, get a little. Next week, yep. Well, I was looking at this question. What was it, Daniel, you were supposed to redo the signs? Thank you, a wayfinding sign. Uh, we had one up, we put our first one up coming in out by Walmart a month ago, two, three weeks ago. Second one went up east of town, uh.
Today.
Today, was it today?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, so it's up, and those are two, although one on east end of town, uh, we've got two in the budget for this year, so we'll get those ordered pretty quick. We did have to buy up another pole for the one on the east side of town, because after R-Dot gave us the exact spot we had to put it, required to put it, it was kind of down in the ditch a little bit, so the pole that came with it was, of course, too short, so we had purchased another pole, uh, so we were an extra pole, but anyway, we'll get two more ordered, and, uh, had, I think, a few compliments on those, they look, they look pretty nice, and ours, ours are, sorry.
They look really nice.
Ours are different, uh, I'll, I'll brag, but everybody else's just has their name, of course, nothing here, and ours has our name with our logo, so, uh, as you don't already know, we're special around here. Anyway, we're proud of that, like, I want that. Anything else for anybody? Again, welcome, sir, to Greenwood, appreciate you. I would, uh, just a note, uh, I got a call, I don't wanna end on a bad note necessarily, but I got a call recently from a, a young lady that hears hearing Greenwood and, uh, concerned of, I don't know what else to call it, but just a lot of cancer in this area, and, and it kind of made me think, and, and she said, I don't, I'm not asking you to do anything about it, but I guess I am too, and see if I could talk to somebody, so I put a call in to Dr., uh, State Representative Dr. Lee Johnson, to see what he knew, uh, he's gonna, you know, just talk to the health department and just see. I just know there's a lot that is present in this community, or seems to be. We've lost a lot of good people to it, a lot of people are infected by it, so, um, I don't have an answer for sure, but keep those folks and those families in your prayers, if you would, along with emergency service. Again, echo what Mr. Grau said. Well, in that, with that, anything else?
What about the tree situation?
Really? We were gonna go on, sorry. No, it's okay. Mr. Henry, you wanna touch on that?
We're still working.
Mayor, I've had questions over the sidewalk, I called you today.
Yes.
I was coming on the sidewalk.
Wow, that is so, going so fast, it's hard to keep up with it. Not. Uh, as you know, we've, we got, uh, permitted by the state, which is a big deal, not only have I been told we can't rebuild one on the state highway, I knew that the state was gonna help us pay for it, so we got a grant approved, seemed like five years ago, it hasn't been that long, but it's been a while. We had to obtain 36 easements. I can tell you absolute, without a doubt, Danielle has worked tirelessly on getting those 36 easements, along with Mr. Bell, uh, we've all kind of thrown our hands up in the air.
I did the easy ones.
Each one, Sunny got the easy ones, and returned them over to Danielle. I drive her crazy every day, because I ask her every day where we are, and, and there's about four remaining that are seen to be unobtainable or dead. I won't mention any names, you can if you like, uh, after visiting with Mr. Shores, Jeremy who was there earlier to the building, he's our engineer on this project, uh, he got with R-Dot, and a couple of these easements, we believe, or he assures me that we can, at a last resort, take a five-foot sidewalk and, and turn it into a four-foot wide sidewalk to stay off of said properties and not have to obtain an easement. What we're asking for from all these businesses and/or individuals is a five-foot temporary easement, construction easement, and a five-foot permanent easement for the sidewalk. Again, two of them, Mr. Shores assures me that we can shrink and, or narrow the sidewalk to four foot, and there, because there's only a foot of that sidewalk was gonna be on property, uh, and, and take a little bit of a chance with R-Dot's approval to build a sidewalk from the right of way, meaning we'll probably be closing the lane of traffic on state highway a little bit with R-Dot's approval, so there's that that can probably remedy two of these. One, we're very near getting, uh, with a whole lot of emails, I'm, I'm literally, probably 50 or so back and forth, and then there's another one that we just have not received that we believe we're going to. So that's where we are, if we can get those done, either by narrowing, I'm almost proposing a giant sign to explain why that's a four-foot sidewalk, but we'll talk about that later.
So the two, the two narrower ones are Bradley Oliver and the LDS church?
That's correct.
And the two that we think we're fixing to get are where?
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell.
And Baptist Health.
What about the guy the other side?
And we have one, I'll say, so there's five, so we have one, which is a privately owned rent house on the other side, east, west of O'Reilly, and those folks live in Texas. We, they, they scoffed, if you will, of our, we don't offer money for easements typically, or a dollar, and that's what most of these have come back for, I mean, it's, most of them have come back for that, which we never paid, by the way, I'm sure we'll be in lawsuit money phase, so there's probably lots of dollars we owe, but, uh, that one is not, I, we cannot get, I finally realized today that I have a phone number of a, of a mother, the mother that is going to Texas in August, her mother-in-law, and I'm gonna talk to her and see if I can't get something for that. That one is a real tough one, and that one is not one, and by the way, I've said it before, make sure everybody understands, we cannot, the grant will not be, we can't get the money from R-Dot, we can't begin construction until every single easement, we can't hodgepodge it, they will not allow it, we can't skip anything, you have to, whatever you apply it for has to be built, so, yes, sir?
Along the same lines, if you're finished with that, the Greenwood citizens are very interested in 45 Highway Lightning.
Yes.
71 right there, where it bears off.
Yep.
You're not building one, having trouble with these in the city, or it's not what they have there.
Under construction, and they don't have, they have people arguing about the mobiles, and so it's a typical one.
We, thank you, we, we've done, and I heard that too, that they're in submission, we've, we've done really, really well, I say we, Danielle.
Census is higher than theirs.
Yeah, yeah, so we've done pretty well, it's just that, but that one is, is gonna be maybe the toughest, and that, uh, not that it matters if it's straight from here to the door, flattens a flitter, if you will, doesn't matter, that one that you're referring to is, is a little bit complicated, and it's probably more expensive than any of them combined, those 36 because of the drainage. Now, with that all said, we're jumping right in with phase two, which we have already been approved. I made council aware of it several months ago, that we approved for phase two of that project. Dr. R-Dot sends all paperwork on, you've already signed your name to that, I believe you call it blank check for that one, phase two, uh, but I'm, I'm encouraging Jeremy to get going on that, because if this has taken this long, who knows how long it'll take for phase two and over three, so.
You already started on easements for phase two?
No, we don't, we have, we have not gotten that back yet. We know, we know property owners, but we've not got an official document to go to anybody. But as, as she believes her job will be finished soon with phase one, she just gets to start all over with.
Bradley Oliver's is a?
And he's gonna be a huge part of phase two, or actually, three, actually.
Two.
Two, okay, I'm sorry.
A big huge part of.
Mr. Oliver, the split, the mini mall?
Yeah.
Here we go again.
So it's back on, so that's locally owned?
We don't need a sidewalk there, right?
Well, the, the plan's called for, but it's an interesting, I haven't talked to Jeremy, I mean, it's asphalt, so whether it's markings, or, or if it's just drawings in that very well painted lines.
They haven't done the surveying yet.
You still have to have this easement.
There's, they'll, they'll be the 10 liter, 10 liter sidewalk, then they'll hit the parking lot. I would imagine that that's gonna be, uh, painted, but like, again, that's just my opinion. We haven't seen any engineering on it yet.
Yeah, we don't have to.
And, uh, you know, it should be a straight shot down to the car park, but we're gonna have two, two sidewalks, uh, connected to the bridges.
Yeah, the biggest cost is, is getting across creek on next to the bridges.
But theoretically, we should probably engineer that, I guess, to, to, for nothing to be there, I guess is what I'm asking. At, at the, what's that called, private steel?
Why is there a mall?
You know, whatever that thing is.
Well, no, I, I think.
I mean, it's, we should design it so that we come to it, we don't have any engineers.
I think, I think we'll have to have a line there, I think we'll have to have something delineating that, that's where you pull off.
And the highway department might, might require a concrete sidewalk, we don't know this.
Yeah, that's what I think, I don't know that. Jeremy, I talked to Jeremy today, prior, and he's starting the process of the engineering on phase two.
I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking, if, if it doesn't happen to be part of the design that is an easement, why would that be?
I agree, but I'll be surprised if they don't make this market.
Well, I, I was hoping that R-Dot would kind of have their specifications, because I was just real impressed on how they made, uh, crossing that Denver, uh, on the bridge there, made it pull up, I don't know, two or three times.
Yeah, the good news is they make you do it, they make you do it right.
Their specifications.
We don't have to worry about Luther Sugar gun and suit us for an ADA, non-compliant, so. So, so Brad, Bradley, that's a locally owned deal, that's a local problem. The LDS church, is it a congregationalist church, does it actually own that, or is it owned in Utah?
I talked to the bishop, and, and his phone number is from Utah, and he, uh, and Danielle has sent him the easements, of course, he refused, and I talked to him a little bit more, and he, he, and I, I talked to one of the church members who talked to him, I think he's agreed to it now, and he says, send me everything, and I'll get a sign and get it back to you, we just haven't heard back from him yet, but.
So we're close on that.
Yeah.
And then Taco Bell, that's owned by KMAC.
Oh, it's California.
We're out of San Diego.
That's why I'm asking, every day, communication. I'm talking with them every day.
So that's a problem, then?
Yes.
Well, I'm ready, we're getting ready to remedy it, but I'll, I'll catch you up to date on that thing, but.
And then the Baptist Health is in Pennsylvania, the company that owns that.
So do not boycott Taco Bell.
It's not the local.
They do not own the property, it's not, it is not Taco Bell saying no, it's the property owner saying.
Our business originally didn't want sidewalk across there until they decided they needed to remodel their, their building, and I told them that was kind of that, and they kind of need to build them, they're handling them.
That's right. And LDS first.
There will be a sidewalk there, you can pay for it, or the state can pay, they decided the state would pay for it.
The church first response, I believe, was, we have a sidewalk, we don't need another, and they do, but this is, what we're proposing is a, a public sidewalk, what they have is attached to the building.
Yeah, their foyer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Been interesting.
It's been a long road, and we have.
The west of, uh, O'Reilly's is gonna be the, the issue.
And I have.
And phase two is from Webster Street to Walmart?
Correct.
Okay. And the potential problems are where?
I thought, I thought we agreed phase two would.
Basically.
I, I already agreed that phase two is gonna be from Santa Creek to, to the church.
Now, we have, we have, you know, fact, that listed as phase two is what you just described, phase three's coming the other way to Ash Street. We, I, I visited with Mr. Shores about the possibility of swapping those, but I don't wanna throw a keek at all with R-Dot to say, hey, we want your money, but can we not, can we spend it over here? So he's looking into that force to give.
I thought he said there would be.
Well, he, he said that he didn't think so, but I'm, I asked him.
I think we get more use coming this way than we would Walmart.
Right. He, he, he's careful not to, absolutely, but.
I think we'll get an easement from Burton Properties.
Where, where?
Had to bring that.
Where do we? Oh, uh, well, it's not on that side.
Uh, yeah, okay.
It's on the other side of the highway, so we don't need.
Makes me wonder where they get the loan out.
I'll tell you another place that's a problem for sidewalks is between, uh, the bridge here by senior citizens to, uh, Hollywood Apartments and Holmes area. There's lots of folks that walk from that area, you know?
They have a sidewalk there.
They got a piece by the ambulance service, and then they, then they fall in the ditch there, uh, pre-part.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of the old town sidewalks and, 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 so, yeah, we need to be looking at those too, for sure. But it, I, what I was gonna say was, I'm, I'm sure, and I, and I have to remind myself every day, I don't know if I've been, you know, crazy with it, is making sure that R-Dot is okay with, uh, the timeframe that this is taking, you know, we have missed deadlines, absolutely. COVID was, was a good excuse, if you will, but the rest of it is not necessarily a good excuse, but they have assured us repeatedly, and they, they know who we are, because we called to make sure that we're not missing anything, uh, and, and missed out on grant money, so. I even went to Tom recently, and I said, remind me that we have money for this.
Well, it's encouraging that, that Mr. Pitts said that, that, that he would own probably 45, that they have in there.
Yeah.
So there's.
Not just us, yes, not just us.
Nature of the beast.
But again, they're majority, 32 out of 36, 31, just, well, not quite like that. A lot of it is communicating and getting with them and, and just talking to them and showing, but these, these last five are very.
So what we have, Paula, what's the next step?
Out for bid.
Out for bid?
Yeah.
And the plans are already engineered?
Yes. I've worn them out, they're in there, yeah. Everything, like, down to, down to the minute detail of, of things, and they, and possibly. And then, and possibly, as Jeremy has pointed out, that thing, that could change sometime if you get, you know, just like anything else we can build. So, four instances, just for kicks. We are so proud, and so proud, and so proud, say it three times, Waffle House is open. Their sidewalk runs right straight into a pole. I thought I was seeing things. I drove by Waffle House and just all excited about it. And I turned around, and I didn't see that, and I thought it was a temporary pole for, for construction. It's not. So we'll have to go back and, to quote Don Key's, "side fog around that pole, just like Casey's did." So I pointed that out to their state regional, whatever it was, and then he's gone, I wondered about that.
To relieve the, to the problem, don't you say?
Yes, yes. So there we are. There's their sidewalk of the. Anything else?
Michael, what's your word, Jerry?
Paul, is there a second?
Well, I did, I'm saying. How are you?
Good, sir.
How's the job going?
Great.
Do you have a center pitch? Come on, let me have this.
Yeah, it's fire. So, I'm.
This is our city clerk. And there are you.
Well, you guys are so interesting.
Charter handles for the.
The entourage of that commission, all commissions.
It's been only handles a lot of. The projection, you know, advertising, motion.
Yeah, it's all brand dollar commission.
Just generally, just self-tax and a little more thing that you're. Just the analogies and people, it's just great to see how much things, it has something to do with it. It's hard to watch. Also needs to be an asset to meet the free fall. Promoting the advertising to take you. You need credibility, and we have, you know, to make sure. Dollar coverage on.
Now, it's the, the.
The favorite business.
Oh, that's it.
Just do. Check on the, 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 the degree we're interested in. So we're on that seat.
How do you do these things?
Yes, that's the key, you know.
Well, that's the key, you know, I mean.
We intend that. Yeah. Well, and I know that as much as some places, you know, the venture centers, I don't know, they're a real good, I think. Strides and just area of the state, and, and.
And it.